Call this meeting to order, please, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, Southern Shores Planning Board. Uh, you all stand with me and, um, so we pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is a luxury having a full house. I don't think we've had this many members sitting up here in a long time. So, thank you to alternates for showing. All right, um, on the agenda, um, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I get a motion. Make a motion to approve it.
On second, um, on favor say I.
I have a question. I'm, I was looking at it quickly. We have the ZTA twenty-four oh two, we have the TCA twenty-four oh two, or, and the agenda only lists the TCA twenty-four oh two. Should not the agenda list also?
No?
No. It's okay?
Yeah, but it was, it's a repeat the, the ZTA.
So it's, okay.
Yeah, I, I just asked Wes to put it in since we're gonna be talking about it some tonight.
Okay.
It's a slight disturbance.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Um, okay, so, um, next item on the agenda is minutes, approval of minutes, corrections. Anybody?
I have, one, I have a question on line fifty-three. I'm not sure what it means. Uh, it says, uh, on line fifty-three, it says, but our lot with line definition reference one hundred feet, A one hundred T.
Uh, I got you on line fifty-three?
Yeah.
I think maybe it was just supposed to be references A one hundred foot requirement would be my guess.
Yeah.
But just cross out the A.
Yeah, just.
One hundred T.
Yeah, clean up.
Uh, go up to line forty-six.
Yeah.
There's some confusion as to building setback line and its use.
It would be how it's used, I would imagine.
Mm-hmm.
You inserted how in there. I have that too.
Yeah.
If that worked, how.
How, so you're looking.
Then on that same page, I had, uh, line sixty-one, uh, it said, Mr. McLennan's suggestion. It should be Mr. McLennan's suggestion.
I'm sorry, what line is that, sir?
That was sixty-one. McLennan would be possessive. Uh, anybody else have anything on that page or?
I think on line forty-six, you wanna take the possessive law off of it, so if it's gonna be how it's used, there's no possessive there.
Yeah. Good catch. I think our teachers would be proud of us.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the last one from Mr. Reese.
It's on, uh, line forty-six, the thing we just discussed, that, uh, it would be, if it's how it's used, it's is ITS without an apostrophe, it's with the apostrophe is a contraction.
Yes, sir.
Anything else on that page? Other corrections?
Down on, uh, line beginning of one sixteen.
On what?
One sixteen. That paragraph is talking about parking spaces. Um, I have a question, it's some area, same area as the parking space.
It's what?
I just have written down here, say, question mark, same area as the parking space. When you add a tree, you subtract the parking space, right?
Yeah.
Suppose you, maybe reduced by one parking place for each tree that provided, where is that tree supposed to be? Where can it not be?
Well, I mean, we'll discuss that at some point, but what, what would be your correction?
It was a clarification, not a correction.
Yeah. I mean, is it, I didn't read it hard, but is it miss?
Well, it's just, uh, you're taking a parking space out for a tree. Is the tree supposed to, it's not designed to be in that part, in that space, is it?
Well, for, for every twenty parking spaces, um, for a proposed use or existing use may be reduced by one parking space. And is that what you're talking about? That wouldn't?
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna take a parking space out, that's so many square feet, so we're trying to get straight, is that area of the removed parking space dedicated to a tree in that location?
You'd see that on the sketch plan, I mean, but because, as a preliminary drawing, they would know that they've incorporated so many trees because of the number of parking spaces. So you might have a group of four or five trees because they eliminated, you know, X amount of parking spaces. But that would be on a sketch paint plan that we would give.
I'm thinking, you know, it's still, it's been tabled by the council, but maybe that's a question that Wes considers when he goes back to the council with the amendments.
Well, if you all recall, there were, you all considered it one month and I brought it back with revisions. Initially, it didn't really clarify, but in the most recent version, the one that the town council, you all recommended to council, it said, for trees, shade trees planted within parking areas.
Within the parking area?
Yes.
So is that the way this one's gonna be?
Well, this is the minutes from the meeting where you all discussed it when it did not reflect the revisions.
Yeah. Now, if, if there's no correction to how the minutes should read, I think we'll note what it's saying and move on to.
Yeah.
Any other correction? I, I had on page four, line, uh, one sixty, um, line one sixty, planning, planning board in the second mention of planning board, uh, board should be capitalized. And then I also had one on page six, um, line two fifty-two, planning board member McLennan stated, the far publication states that the premiums are overly complicated, what, is that the word you use, Ron, premiums? I mean, what, um, I'm not sure what.
No, I don't remember.
What premiums would be, do you know? Maybe just listen to the, to the YouTube. I, I, I didn't listen to it, but that just seems like an odd word.
It's probably a typo, um, and we can, well, she can go back and listen to the recording and.
Yeah.
And take a look at that and replace it with the correct word.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Okay. I will make a motion that we approve the minutes with, uh, corrections noted. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tony. Um, all in favor of approving minutes with corrections, raise your hand.
All right.
Posed? Okay. I see we have someone sitting in the public venue back there. Would you care to speak to us more?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Well, anytime you jump in, there's another public comment.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Um, all right. I had, um, asked Wes to put these two items from old business back on. Tony, you were thinking that we had too many ZTAs and TCAs, oh, with the same number, but anyway, we had, um, gosh, it's been over a year since we talked about, um, accessory dwelling units, accessory dwelling structures, as they would relate to the state's legislature language. So we kind of put all that stuff on hold when it looked like the House and the Senate were coming up with some different things that would regulate our, our town and other towns in North Carolina, how they do business. So, Wes, do you have any new info on the House bill and any language from the League of Municipalities that we might could understand?
No, sir, there really aren't any updates since, um, last year. I mean, it's been referred to Committee on Rules and Operations of the Senate. Um, there's HB four oh nine and S three seven four. Um, town manager reached out to the League of Municipalities, um, in late May and asked if they had any ideas as to whether or not there would be any movement during this session. Um, and the response was that, uh, this individual Director of Government Affairs, Aaron Wenea, um, I have serious doubts that the ADU bill, HB four oh nine, will move in this legislative session. Time appears to be slipping away from bill proponent, proponents if they want to get something done. Um, there's also been some, uh, recent communication on the NC Plan List Serve, including with our own very own board member, Michael Zener. Um, someone asked, what is the status of S three seven four on Tuesday, June eleventh? And, uh, Mr. Zener, who's well, uh, is on the NCAPA Legislative Committee, stated that as far as we are aware, there have been no updates since this time last year while H four oh nine passed the House in twenty twenty-three, S three seven four has been referred to the Senate Rules Committee. We do understand that S three seven four is eligible for consideration during this year's session, but have seen no movement.
So, basically, pretty much status quo from last year?
Yes, sir.
Um, well, I don't think we need to break in and spend a whole lot of time, but, um, on this because we have talked about it fairly extensively, um, in the past. But I'll, I still think as a town, we need to be aware and prepared that legislature may force our hand on some things in, in these two bills that we might not have any say. Um, the, the resolution that town council had put out, who was that? This resolution was in, um, gosh, it's been three years ago now, um, but the, the resolution, I'll just read one highlighted section from, uh, town council on, on April second, twenty twenty-one. They, um, said the accessory structures with living space are currently allowed in most zoning districts, provided that the structure does not contain sleeping facilities, i.e. bedroom, and a, and a stove oven. Accessory structures can have one or the other, but they cannot have both, so as to be, can not be considered a dwelling unit in order to maintain low density. And the town council made that resolution in response to HB four oh one, SB three forty-nine. Um, so, at this point, Wes, is it, there is no other, um, ordinance that we've passed in town since then. I mean, everything's pretty much on hold, as far as I can tell.
With respect to accessory structure with living space?
Yeah.
We don't have any zoning text, text amendments in the queue.
The same, the same holds, just what I read, the same holds for now, today, as it did when that resolution.
Well, no, we, we did adopt a ZTA that revised the definition of dwelling unit.
Right.
Um, so now, it's not just if a structure has sleeping facilities and a stove or oven, it's if it has any, all of the elements that make up a dwelling unit as defined in one sixty D. So, that, it wasn't a change to our requirements, but by adopting that definition, that was, as a result, that, that interpretation has been modified.
So, it's, it's not so much that, I, I just remember we were, we were in discussion about if you had a bedroom, you can have a stove. If you had a stove, you couldn't have a bedroom. So, how does that change?
Like now, for example, they could have a stove with no bathroom. They could have a stove, a bedroom, but no bathroom.
So, it's almost.
And it's still classified as an ADU.
We don't have accessory dwelling unit in the ordinance. It means that if it does not have all of those elements, then it's an accessory structure with living space, not an accessory dwelling unit.
Is that use specifically listed as a prohibited use, accessory dwelling unit?
No.
But it's not listed as a use either?
No.
Yeah. So, basically, we're, we're on hold. But I, I still think that if we wanna try to regulate accessory dwelling units, and they are, they're coming, I mean, if legislature got to do it this year, they're, they're coming. Um, and I keep going back to one over on Beachtree Trail. And if we can preclude people from doing an accessory dwelling unit that comes clear out to the street, that's a hundred feet away from the house, and if we can think about language to move that accessory dwelling unit closer to the house, connect it to the house, you know, i- if it's street standing, uh, nothing that we can do right now, but it's certainly something I think that our town needs to consider as this evolves in the legislature. Anybody else have any thought on?
Now, we can't prohibit ADUs now because there's, there's no definition of an ADU.
Right, I mean, if we, if we.
Why don't we just say, if this thing comes up, we say, no, you can't do it. Wait for the state to say, you can do it.
I don't know, we're, we're losing.
I just think it's already done.
Well, it won't go any further.
Yeah.
Won't get any more of them, which you might be.
What about regulating, I saw in the paper this week again, uh, in the Virginia Beach area, they're back to the one percent in each of the designated areas?
That's, yeah, for short-term rentals.
But they're ADUs.
Not all. They could be a whole house, short-term rental.
So, can we limit the number of ADUs to a certain percentage, and you jury?
I mean, it's problematic though, because, you know, it's first through the door, last through the door. You know, it's a hard conversation to tell somebody, well, you know, there's five in this area, so you can't be the sixth one. You know, for me, it's kind of arbitrary in a lot of ways, unless you can definitively say, what are the negative consequences of too many ADUs in one particular area? I don't think you can, I don't think there's research out there to that effect, so.
And, and I don't think the legislature in North Carolina's gonna be, they're gonna open up ADUs in a big way.
Well, and their projection was because of the number, like you were just saying, if they're within five hundred feet of each other, then you have more cars and you have, you know, again, so there is an impact by the number that you have in one area, and if we get ahead of it by limiting the number, it's already designated, and those that go, I guess, for a permit process will see that it's, you know, they'll have to wait for an ADU to be non-existent before they, it's almost like looking for a boat slip in southern chores, you gotta get in line for five years. So, why not get in line for an ADU for five years?
Well, I think it's two different, it's two different things too. So, what Virginia Beach is talking about is short-term rentals, which.
But that is an ADU come summer time.
Not all, well, all of these houses are short-term rentals. I mean, you know, so, I, I don't know if you wanna try to deal with that, but on the ADUs, I think the problem is, is that they, you, we cannot, as far as I'm aware, and it may be the conversation for the, for the town attorney, but I don't think you can restrict the ADU or the, the principal dwelling, or both, from being used as a short-term rental. And I, I think unfortunately, that's the problem in our community. They could be a viable opportunity for affordable housing opportunities, but, you know, the market's gonna dictate in most instances that they're gonna be used for short-term rentals.
Exactly. It, it's more for profit than putting up your, your nurse, um, that's gonna be waiting on you when you get too old to do it yourself.
I think the things that we have to look at is, um, it may be having it attached in some way to the main building. I, I know, um, Seacrest Village, their covenant, because I had a, I, I was involved with two properties there, state that it has to be attached, and I actually surveyed it when I was back with the Civic Association. The other thing I think that we could look at is, uh, six thousand square feet is the maximum, um, amount that a house can be. We, we discussed that earlier. Uh, we had, we, we should also look at saying if it's a six thousand square foot house, the ADU takes it beyond the six thousand perhaps, even though it's an accessory. So there's different ways we can attack this in the future, or not attack it, but try to resolve some of the issues. I think attaching it, I know the covenants, uh, when I did it, I had two properties that they ended up doing that because I, I brought, of course, the lawsuit for one of them, but the Civic Association won. So, there is those possibilities to look at that when, whenever we attack this, uh, problem.
The square footage should be attached to the lot. In other words, you can't, yeah, exceed the six thousand on the lot.
I don't think, that would be, I mean, you, if you're only allowed six thousand square feet of heated living space, and you had an ADU that, you know, you were already at the limit, and the ADU was five hundred square feet, you couldn't exceed the, the six thousand square foot maximum, could you?
Yeah, currently, the ordinance says you can't have more than six thousand square feet of enclosed living space for a primary structure and accessory structure.
Right, so, yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to stay within the bounds of six thousand square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and once again, I don't have a, you know, a problem with ADUs. I mean, we're, we're gonna have to accept them, um, from the state, and they're gonna force it down our throat by acclimation, but, you know, that, one of these bills has the setback at five feet for an ADU. Uh, the other one is ten, they amended it to ten, but ours is fifteen, and they go, well, tough. You, you get ten feet, uh, take it or leave it. But I, I think that attaching an accessory dwelling unit and making it aesthetically more part of the house would be okay, or having a certain proximity to the principal residence, not necessarily advocating a hundred percent attachment, but, uh, somehow to get it away from a situation like they have over on Beachtree. Um, just all stuff to, to think about. Um, Wes, as far as, um, any, I've got a note here, this was at our planning board, January twenty twenty-three, so a year and a half ago, uh, there's no registration of, um, Airbnb type stuff in town, is there?
No, sir.
Um, but could the town require an owner to obtain a development approval, such as a zoning compliance permit as a requirement of a short-term rental land use?
Maybe, I, I don't, I'm not sure.
I don't think so. I mean, only if you made it a special use permit for a short-term rental and define the terms of it, but it's not a different, I mean, the challenge is, it's not a change of use necessarily.
Right. I don't think you can require a registration, because then City of Wilmington lose in their court, their court.
Yeah, that, that was it.
Well, that was different. I mean, NACSET does have a registration program.
But it's, it's not valid. It, it, uh, it, it never was valid.
Oh, I don't know about that.
It's got six pages. I like it. I, I would love to.
I don't know why it wouldn't be valid. They didn't have, it was by right.
It, it's very similar to what Wilmington shot down.
Wilmington's was similar to what Jan was talking about, where there was limitations on numbers, and they actually had use permits, but NACSET's was by right, it was just a registration program.
No, I printed that thing out, and I said, boy, this is sweet, I, I would really like to do that here.
I administered it for two years.
Yeah, and, you know, it was very reasonable, it was twenty-five dollars.
Yeah.
They just wanted to know who you were and if you were operating in the right way.
Yeah, all of the, if you were managed by a real estate broker, you were exempt from the registration program.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but if you were, I, I mean, is Airbnb or BRBO, are they real estate brokers?
Nope, no. But it, it would have, but the way it was written, it applied to every rental.
Yeah.
Every short-term rental. But we didn't wanna register the ones, you know, that were managed by real estate companies.
Right. Well, can you, uh, can you definitively let us know if that six-page application that you're aware of, um, would be something that we could possibly work on in the future?
Yeah, I can look into it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
At one time, the, uh, the county tax office, um, if we ever asked for rental properties, how many do we have, where are they in the town, they've always been able to provide that down.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's, if you add more bedroom, if you did an ADU that was actually inside the house, and, and it was a separate living quarters, you know, an Airbnb. the house, and it was a separate living quarters, you know, in Airbnb, I mean, there's basically nothing that we can do that limits going over the septic capacity and going over the parking requirement. I mean, if you turn, if you turn the library in your house into a bedroom, bathroom, suite, there's nothing there that would say, you got to have more parking, you got to have more septic, yes, sir?
I don't think so. Um, we do have an ordinance that says you can't have more than five unrelated people living in a house. Unless it's a short-term rental.
You would need to build, you would need a building permit to do that, that conversion, and you would have to have sign off from the Department of Health.
Yeah, I mean, I would think so.
If they're not expanding the footprint, but if they're adding a toilet, I mean, it depends on what they're doing.
Yeah, yeah.
If they're taking a library, you say it's a library, if it doesn't have a toilet or anything like that in it, then, yeah, they probably would have to get a permit. But if it was somebody just threw a mattress and a bed in there and they used an existing bathroom, we wouldn't know about it. We'd have no way to know about that.
Well, like I said, I don't, I don't think we need to spend a ton of time on this because we're legislature impaired until, I mean, we could, we could put, put together an ordinance and three months from now would be no good, so. Right now, it sounds like you can have an accessory building that's not considered an accessory dwelling unit.
You can have, you can't have all of the elements of a, of an accessory dwelling, or you can't have all the elements of a dwelling unit. And I'll just say here, recently, I mean, almost all the permits that have been issued are stove or stove and oven, and no bedroom or bedroom or stove.
Yeah, and like, like I said, a year and a half ago, whenever, what difference does it make? I mean, you know, that, that they make ovens that operate off of 110 all day long.
Still being used for the same purpose.
Yeah, yeah, you're getting the CO and you, you're, you're cooking literally, so. That restriction doesn't hold a whole lot of people back, I don't think. Anyway, anybody else have anything to add to that thought process for now? I mean, I, I would certainly like to at least keep the fire going because if we accept just what the state gives us and we don't try to do a little bit of extra to protect our town, I think we'd be doing a disservice, so. All right, moving right along in old business. Continued discussion of lot disturbance, stormwater management, permanent requirements as they relate to residential districts. Wes, if you can pull up ZTA, whatever it is, 2402. Everybody have a, um, a copy of that in front of them? Okay, um, well, just to recap what, what was going on with this lot disturbance, stormwater from the February 21st Planning Board meeting. So I wasn't here, but, um, you know, everybody was here but me, I think. Y'all looked at a ZTA 2401, which had some, some lot disturbance, stormwater language in it that was subsequently withdrawn by staff, Section 36-171, which spoke to the lot disturbance, stormwater stuff, was removed from 24-01. And, but 24-01 was a pretty long ZTA. It was 24 pages long. And it encompassed stuff like 50-foot setbacks, time limits for permits, wastewater treatment plant regulations, planning board review of site plans, invested rights. But it also, in that Section 36-171, within that ZTA, staff withdrew that section for good reason. It had one clause in there that said, all trees greater than or equal to six inches in diameter, four and a half feet up from the ground, to be removed from the lot had to be shown on the survey. And I think we, everybody deemed that as being a little excessive. So staff withdrew it and revisited it with a separate ZTA, which is ZTA 2402, which is what we've got here now. Planning Board heard that, reviewed that on March 18th, at our March 18th meeting. It was lot disturbance, stormwater, ZTA with the tree removal restrictions in commercial, however, not in, um, addressed, not in, in residential. So we had, if you remember, we had a lot of discussion about the, that ZTA not advertising that we were going to do something in the residential zone, which ended up getting passed by this planning board four to one, keeping the language exactly the same as staff had, had written it, with the caveat that we would come back and address residential situations in lot disturbances and stormwater. So, that ZTA 2402 went to town council on April the 9th. At the town council meeting, they approved it as written and as passed by this planning board. Wes had spoke to the, spoken to, or spoke to the town council at that meeting regarding the planning board's recommendation that we revisit residential lot disturbance and stormwater stuff. So that's why we have that here tonight. I went back and looked at the YouTube of that meeting, and Wes, if you look on pages, if you go to page two of that ZTA, ZTA 2402, if you go to page two on line 26, you see Section 36-171, lot disturbance and stormwater management. Down at line 20, or at 34, item number one, says, "All applications for lot disturbance, stormwater management shall be accompanied by a survey and site plan of proposed improvements." And then if you go over to number four under that same section on page three, on line 30, says, "In addition to the, to the provisions above, in the general commercial district, no removal of trees greater than six inches in diameter, measured at four and a half feet above the ground, so on and so forth." Well, at our meeting of that night, Wes, we were trying to figure out how to, how to get residential tree restriction in there, too, to avoid someone being able to clear a lot and sit on it for 10 years, completely wiped of any tree. So Wes suggested that on that line 30, number four, rather than using in the general commercial district, we would strike that and just put it in all zoning districts, which would be consistent with what's stated in number one. I'm advocating for that change to be made so that and advertised, and people can come talk about it. I was concerned with the board that we were doing something that, that wasn't necessarily in the best interest of the public, so as far as being able to come and speak to that. But I, I think we need to have a ZTA that would encompass all zoning districts in this. And you simply strike four words. We're there. Anybody?
We've been, this has been.
I know what you're going to say.
No, I do want to do it. This has been bounced around for 10 years, no, more than that, 15 years, I would say this has been bounced around.
A tree ordinance has been bounced around.
Right, but this was.
You know, this isn't a tree ordinance.
This was included in, in the tree ordinances. And I, in, in the meetings that we had at the time, back with the old planning boards, this was one part that was never, no one ever got up and, and said they didn't like this part of it. So I'm just saying that this, this part in the, in those other ZTAs that were written, this was never a part of contention concerning the setbacks, just, just as a point of reference.
I'm, I'll go on the record, say, I'm, I'm not in favor of a blanket tree ordinance.
No, no.
I, I think it should be, the homeowner's right to cut down every tree on his lot if he wants to. But, um, within reason, you know, having to jump through some hoops to do it and not let it sit and rot down to, you know, compost over 10 years. I, I don't, I'm not in agreement with that, but as far as someone's right to cut down trees on their lot, yeah.
Yeah, I, this, this was never, the only contention, and it just struck me, with this particular aspect is if you own contiguous lots, the people objected, there was, there was objection to not being able to cut down the setback trees in adjoining lots that they owned. So that was one of the contentions that we had at the planning board meetings that we attended. But as far as the rest of it, there was never, no one ever objected to that except that one aspect. If we have an adjoining lot, so it's something that we should look at, if you have an adjoining lot, can you, they said, you're restricting me from cutting down on my adjoining lot. So that, that was the one contention that came up, okay? So that's just general reference, so you know.
Well, my question is, when, when this was being crafted by staff, what was the intention of having in all zoning districts in number one, and commercial zoning districts only in number four?
As we discussed at the March 18th meeting, as you all recall, we had a recent special use permit application. We're, buffers were a big part of the conversation.
Right.
So that's why there's more of a focus on commercial. That's why this only applies to commercial. This is a way to encourage the property owners of vacant property in the commercial zoning district to retain, to encourage them to retain additional trees so that it could be provided in a buffer, as your required buffer can use existing vegetation, so.
I mean, the challenge here is for commercial, for commercial property, they cannot remove trees prior to getting the lot disturbance and stormwater management permit. And in most cases, for the commercial property, they won't even get to that point until they've gone through site plan. So this board will have seen what is proposed for that site and can make an assessment whether or not the existing trees on the property should or shouldn't remain. Because presumably, they've not yet removed them because they don't have their land disturbance permit. And the only reason they would have removed them is if they'd done so in violation of the ordinance. The challenge with residential here is that in most cases, the lot disturbance, stormwater management permit would be the first permit that they would apply for. But this, it doesn't really do anything because they can still apply for that permit and clear that lot.
Um, yeah. But what, what harm would there be in, rather than saying, in the general commercial district, we would encompass all zoning districts? Then, and then if you go back, and this is another question I have for Wes, is if you go back to number one, it says, "All applications for lot disturbance and stormwater management shall be accompanied by a survey and a site plan of the proposed improvements." Can you define, Wes, what a site plan of the proposed improvements might entail? What, what would that site plan of, you know, proposed improvements be?
Um, in most cases, it's a survey site plan that shows development on a vacant lot for a new house.
Yeah.
Driveway, parking area.
That would be an improvement, proposed improvement.
Yes, or the main thing they, the most important thing they need to show, or one of them, is the elevation at the corners of the proposed structure in reference to mean sea level. Because that's what we use to determine how much fill you're bringing in, or you're bringing in any fill, and how it's going to affect building height. But I think we talked about this at the last meeting as well, is that not, in not all cases, when we issue a lot disturbance permit, are they proposing construction? So in some cases, they're proposing to remove trees and flatten it out and grade it. So it's more, in some cases, so it's easier for them to sell, I believe, easier for them to market, I've, I've heard that.
Or, or let it sit.
Or the owner, so that they can disturb, in some cases, it's, they, they, they can't get in there. They'll say that they, they have a hard time getting in there and seeing what all, how exactly they want to put, they don't know where they want to put the house yet.
Yeah.
And then, and then in some cases, yeah, we've issued lot disturbance permits for situations similar to that, and they still haven't built on it.
But it, I mean, I'm reading it literally, and it says, "Shall, shall be accompanied by a survey," which, it doesn't say it has to be a current survey, it just says a survey. And site plan of the proposed improvements, which means that, that site plan should show impro, improvements, i.e. like the house.
For removing trees or grading in a certain area.
Is that an improvement, or is that?
My interpretation would be, yes, sir.
Okay.
But they may not be, have any proposed improvements, they, you know.
Structure.
Yeah.
But I, I think of improvements as more of showing a proposed layout of the site plan, the, the structure with the driveway.
You're wanting them to, so you're, what you're suggesting is that prior to removing trees, let's say this changes to all zoning districts, that prior to removing trees from any property, they have to get a lot disturbance, stormwater management permit. And they would not be able to get that permit unless they were proposing to submit a plan with a structure on, with a house on it.
A proposed improvement plan.
And should you have, like, for a 12 months, a year? In other words, not that they're going to clear the lot and do all this, they have to start construction within a year?
I'm not, I mean, you know, that, that would be a question for Wes, I suppose. I mean, if that's doable.
Development approval is good for one year.
Anyway, yeah.
So the intent would be that they go through this of clearing the lot because they will start construction within a year? In other words, can you nail it down that that is?
I don't think we could require somebody to get an approval for a house if we issued a lot disturbance permit. I'm not an attorney, but I doubt our attorney would say.
Well, I don't even think you could. Well, I don't even think you could, let's say hypothetically, you got somebody to submit a plan for a proposed house even though maybe they aren't going to build it. They go out and clear the lot, you can't mandate that they actually then build the house. So I, I think for me, the goal, I, I, what I understand your goal is, is that you're wanting people to evaluate whether or not all the trees need to be removed before they clear cut a lot.
Well, my goal is to make what's on number one item, which is, you know, in all the zoning districts over number four. And there's no tree language in residential zoning district. If we take number four and just scratch through in the general commercial district and make it consistent and say in all zoning districts, then what you can do in the commercial district or cannot do in the commercial district would hold true for the residential district as well.
Fair enough, but, but to what end?
To, I guess, be consistent and eliminate, you know, tree cutting without, you know, a permit of some regard, whatever that may be.
Well, why wouldn't you consider trees as part of stormwater? You wouldn't let them rip up, you know, a drain, you know, or anything. But the trees on a lot, if someone wants to clear, clear a lot, that's going to change the hydraulic nature of the lot.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So it's stormwater, it's stormwater component.
I, I don't disagree with that either, but again, this doesn't do any of that. This doesn't, my point is this, this doesn't mandate that anyone that has a residential property do anything, except get a permit before they clear cut.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no definition of, you know, taking that, those trees out of any size that may be in your way to get a sight line from front to back on your lot. This eliminates you taking out trees greater than six inches in diameter, in my mind, just like it does for commercial. So what's wrong with that? I mean, what's wrong with putting, replacing, you know, the language and have it consistent in all zoning districts?
Yeah, and it also, it, it says in the setback, so we're not talking about, it says right here, "No removal trees measured, et cetera, within the front, side, or rear yard setbacks when any unapproved." So it's not that we're talking about all the trees in a lot, we're talking about the set. That's why I brought up that the only problem we had with this was in adjoining properties owned by the same person, where they argued that they shouldn't, they could clear between their two properties. Other than that, it's the setback.
Is there a diminutive thing, suppose a tree's dead in the setback? And they want to take it out, you still have to get a permit under, if, in that, in that construction?
Potentially.
Diseased or?
Yeah.
Again, it, it's with the exception of disease or, or trees that could cause a hazard.
But is that in there?
That's not in here, no, you'd have to.
You'd have to put that in, that was in.
You'd have to have some diminutive exception. Then you get into the question, how do you prove it's diseased, you know, all kinds of problems.
Well, if, if we were all in agreement, except for me, I wasn't, I didn't vote for it last in, in March, because I wanted this residential language in there. And once again, the board felt like that we were overstepping what was advertised for our meeting, which said, "Commercial," and, you know, so, so be it. But now, if we have Wes do a ZTA just on, you know, that section, it's, it's four words. And it goes from addressing in the general commercial district to in all zoning districts. That's all I'm asking for. Why not? I mean, what, what, what harm is it?
I mean, I don't know that, I mean, the harm for me is that we're making people get a permit to remove trees that they can remove with a permit. Meaning that there's nothing to prohibit them from doing, from removing trees.
Just like in the commercial zone.
That's, but that's not true because the commercial zone ensures that they preserve the trees on the property prior to their permitting so that they can be reviewed when this board and council reviews site plan. That, that's not the same case with residential. We're not prohibiting anyone from doing anything, we're just requiring them to get a permit to do the thing that they can do anyway.
But limit the size of the tree that they can take out, is what this, what.
But it doesn't.
My intention is, is to, to limit the size of the tree at the residential construction phase.
But they, but they can remove any size as long as they get a permit. So it doesn't, it doesn't preserve trees, is what I'm saying.
No, I mean, ultimately, like I said, you know, it, it's a homeowner's right to take out every tree on his lot when he's ready to build a house, but not let, you know, someone go in and, and completely defoliate, take down every tree and let it sit for years and years and years. I mean, who wants to live next door to that or across the street from it?
If that, if that's the goal, I think there's a different way to go about it. Name it. I mean, you, you could, you could outright prohibit tree removal without, without the issuance of a building permit.
No, it wouldn't be for that.
Why?
I think it would be too cumbersome on, you know, the builder, the homeowner, to do that. I mean, I, I think we're, we're okay with this, you know, lot disturbance stormwater permit, just, I would like to see it in all zoning districts and not just the general commercial district. I don't know. I mean, anybody see any harm in putting that clause in there? I mean, substituting? I mean, does it do harm? I don't know.
I don't see a problem with doing it, but.
Well, I think that probably the best thing to do is to, to have a vote on moving forward with Wes to change that language on item four to read rather than in the general commercial district. It would be changed to in all zoning districts. Be the best way to go about it, Wes, vote at this point?
Yes, sir. Someone would need to make a motion, second, and a, a vote to direct staff to bring a zoning text amendment to you all to reflect what you just said in number four so that it says, not just in the general commercial district, but in all zoning districts.
I will make that motion on item number four, under 36171, to change the language to, in addition to the provisions above, in all zoning districts rather than in the general commercial district.
Before a second, can, can I make a comment before we second it, or no?
No, I would call for a second, then we'll have discussion.
Okay.
And a vote.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so, discussion, motion, and second, discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with it. The only thing, as we said earlier, about diseased or diseased or hazardous trees. And in A, it says, "We shall be, it shall be an offense to remove a tree in violation of provision of this section, it shall be an offense for the property," et cetera, et cetera. And I think we might, it might be advantageous to add, unless diseased or hazardous tree, unless it's a diseased or hazardous tree.
Who's going to make that determination?
Well, when we did this, well.
The zoning administrator.
Yeah, the zoning administrator, you, he could, yeah. First of all, diseased trees are pretty obvious. And hazardous is if you see it's leaning or it is a problem. I mean, there, there are observational skills, and I would leave it up to the zoning administrator in his judgment to see. Aren't you happy with that, Wes? Or, or you could get somebody, if there's, if there's a contention, have somebody that's an arborist, they're coming out, there's a ton of arborists. I just think what we're doing, we're, we're boxing in, and you're going to have people protest that because.
You, you, your point is valid, and, you know, I'm not quite sure how you'd go about working that in, Wes, I mean, any thoughts?
If you all want to, I guess if you wanted to amend your motion to include such direction, we can work on that.
Okay, well, then I will, I will do that. And the motion, the first part of the motion would still stand. Then, under item A, if we can put language in item A that would address diseased or dead.
Hazardous.
Trees. Yeah, hazardous.
Dead or hazardous, or just hazardous?
Yeah, dead or, dead or, or trees that would cause, that are hazardous.
Okay, so, got that?
Yes, sir.
Motion, second, discussion. Anybody?
I mean, I would just say, on that last point, having been in the position to make that determination and wanting to rely on the opinion of an arborist, that there, at, at a time, recent time, there were only two, there was only one tree company here that had a licensed arborist on staff.
Well, and that, that's kind of baked into this thing anyway. I mean, if there was a problem, which, I mean, we're just talking about a lot disturbance permit, we're not talking about, you know, a big tree permit. We're just talking about a lot disturbance permit. And if, you know, John Smith said, "I disagree, this, this tree is not hazardous," then the, he's got to prove it.
No, what it says is, what you just did, and I don't, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, is that without a permit, you can remove trees that are dead or hazardous, or diseased or hazardous. So I'm going to go out there, have an arborist make a determination that every tree on the property is hazardous or diseased, and they're going to remove them because they don't need a permit.
I think you could.
And I've been in that situation.
I think you could make, you know, stories like that, I mean, not just that, but we could weave other situations in there. I mean, I'm not trying to get perfection here, I'm just trying to make it consistent.
I understand, but that's not a story, that's an experience.
Yeah, well.
And then what's going to happen is, I'm just, I'm trying to help. I'm trying to be helpful here. Then they're going to say, well, Wes, they have an arborist certification saying that all these trees were hazardous and diseased, that's why they removed them. Can Wes prove otherwise? No, because they've been removed, he hadn't made an assessment, so.
I think it would be an extremely rare circumstance.
Yeah.
That may pop up, it, it may, I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying that if, you know, circumstance would arise, I guess we deal with it as it arises. That's, that's my take. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five oh, Wes? Got a little bit more work, but it's only four words.
Yes, pretty simple, sir.
Okay. All right. Moving on to do business. Town code 24-02. Can you give us a brief synopsis of why we're looking at this tonight, Wes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is a town code amendment. These are not amendments to the zoning ordinance, so we're calling it TCA 2402 instead of ZTA 240, I guess we'd be at four. But at any rate, the first proposed changes are to section 1-2 of the town code to add the definitions of development and development approval, consistent with 160D. These are exactly how they're defined in 160D. The second proposed amendment, the section, second section is in section 16-4, and that's the town flood damage prevention ordinance. And the proposal, to sum it up, is, you all recall, we have a local elevation standard of eight feet above mean sea level. All the, all the towns and their county got together and we, we all adopted local elevation standard. Ours is eight feet. So in doing so, right now, when we adopted it, our current ordinance says that instead of providing an under construction or finished, unfinished construction elevation certificate in X, in shaded X in X zones, to prove that a property is above eight feet or in compliance, that a survey, in lieu of that, a survey currently can be provided, a new survey, or an old survey. However, over the, now that this has been in place since, I think, 2020, in most cases for properties, when there's not new construction, we have an old elevation certificate on file. But the way the ordinance is written, it's in lieu of, it's with a survey. So what we're proposing now is to say, instead of under construction elevation certificate, finished construction elevation certificate, or a survey, an owner or a contractor can provide a FEMA-approved form, which includes elevation certificate, a survey, or any other document prepared by a licensed professional. And this would be used to demonstrate that the natural grade of a parcel exceeds RFP E, RFP E of eight feet instead of an elevation certificate. So that means we could have an elevation certificate that's on file. We could use, they could submit a new survey as they currently could that shows a spot elevation right next to the home that, that shows and demonstrates that the ground is, let's just say it's 10 feet. Or other documentation prepared by a licensed professional could just be a letter from a surveyor or whoever, you know, licensed landscape architect or someone saying, "I found the elevation at so and so and so and so to be at 10 feet above mean sea level." That's all we would need. So this is an effort to just make it easier for owners and property contractors. And again, this would only apply in the X, non, the shaded X in X zones. If it's in, if it's property in an AE or VE or AO flood zone, they still have to provide elevation certificates, so this would just be in shaded X and unshaded X. So we are recommending approval of this town code amendment. And I'm trying to answer any questions if you have any. And I, oh, I'm sorry, Kewdoble Hills, their language is very similar to this. And I did send this to our state representative named Erin Futral. She reviews, she helped all the towns in the county with our model ordinances to get us where we, what we have in place today. And she reviews proposed changes, and she had no objections to these changes. It's still above what FEMA requires, so we're not changing the minimum requirements.
Any questions, Wes? I just was curious, you know, any examples of how builders or homeowners or developers would be impacted positively or negatively from, from this?
I think it's positively because they, they have more options now. It's not just a survey or an elevation certificate, they can have a letter prepared, it can be an older elevation certificate, because up until now, we've always operated and interpreted this to mean that they have to provide new elevation certificates, whereas we have so many properties in the town where we have old elevation certificates. It's been, since it's a FEMA-approved form, that we're not, we're not putting a date on it, then if it's, if it's an elevation, elevation certificate from 2006, it says that, says that. six, and it says that, says that the lowest adjacent grade is above eight feet.
Yeah, yeah. Now, it makes sense to me, I mean, it seems like it, had to go through a few of those, and it seems like definitely could save you some money, um, these elevation certificates aren't cheap.
Right.
For builders and homeowners.
Or a new survey, or a letter.
True, yeah, everything. Anybody have any?
Yeah.
Talk around a minute. Could I get a motion to, um, approve this to be sent to, uh, town council at their next meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve TCA twenty-four-oh-two.
Second.
Ed Lawler?
Seconds.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any suggestions?
Aye.
Opposed, none?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Public comment, Mr. Martin?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the only one.
Uh-oh, you got it.
Mark Martin, one ninety-one Wax Myrtle Trail, the only comment I'd have tonight is thank you for that change, because we've run into that recently here, where we're having to wait three, four, five, six weeks for an elevation, surveyor to get out, to do an elevation certificate, where we've already had the documentation and it's in file, and all we have to have is a little notation on it, so, um, appreciate the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, planning board member comments, start down, Charlie's in.
Not for me.
Michael?
No, sir.
The only comment I would make is, uh, I, I would suggest, if you haven't looked at the, uh, town count, last town council meeting, I would suggest you look at the last town council meeting, the section on, um, where we were trying to do commercial design standards. It's, uh, quite interesting.
Ed? Robert? I don't have any either, so Wes, um, got any announcements?
Yes, sir, next meeting, next regular meeting is July fifteenth, five o'clock, um, most likely.
July what?
I'm sorry? The next meeting is July fifteenth.
Yeah.
At five o'clock. Um, and we will have, um, the tree removal, ZTA, you all discussed tonight, most likely, um, there will also have, uh, some proposed, most likely, some more proposed amendments for, uh, modernizing our town code, including, uh, what was discussed at the last meeting, the Bitcoin mining, prohibition being added to our list of prohibited uses.
Um, I will ask you, since Tony's coming up, um, could you clarify, um, the commercial design standards, uh, ZTA that town council, um, spoke to at their last meeting?
They, they did not take any action on it, they were, they, they tabled the commercial design standard, ZTA, um, and they also tabled the lot width, ZTA. From my, based on my understanding, I believe they will be discussing commercial design standards again at their July second meeting. I'm not sure about lot width, but, uh, they did not approve or deny, they tabled the commercial design standard, ZTA.
So if they take it up, um, at their July meeting, the commercial design standards, when would be the earliest that we would, I mean, if they kick it back to us at that meeting, when would be the earliest that we would hear?
If they, on July second, if they were to send it back to the planning board, um, then it would most likely be on your regular, your next regular scheduled meeting on July fifteenth, unless you all called a special meeting.
So they could, they could add on to it and send it back to us, or send it back to us in its entirety and say, keep going?
I think they could approve it, they could deny it, uh, they could make some revisions to it, I don't think they could add much more to it.
Mm-hmm. But they could, they could make revisions at their Ju, early July meeting, and we'd get it on the fifteenth?
They could approve parts of it if they wanted, and then send the rest of it back to you all, um, there, there are different ways it could go.
Yeah. Okay, so, just have to see, but yeah, they, they did table it, and, um, I watched the meeting.
Yeah.
So, hope, hopefully, they dig in a little bit, um, more and understand, you know, what we're dealing with, and we'll have some suggestions from the town council on how this thing moves, but we definitely need to move it.
Yes.
Um, okay, well, any more announcements, Wes?
No, sir.
I won't be here July fifteenth.
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
I will second that motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none?